This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the, whatever day it is, August 24th, tonight of City Council work session. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Cutter Copeland. We really have nothing on the work session agenda to talk about, but we have some things that we could throw on there, and we could start with our, some of our reports and get staff out of the way. If you look in your packet, you should see Councilmember Copeland, Cutter Copeland's resignation. So included in the packet is Cutter's resignation, which, you know, we can make a motion to accept it tonight, but I mean, if you don't accept it, it doesn't mean he doesn't resign. Cutter has gone back to school, which is in California, and he was able to participate as a council member during COVID when his university was shut down. So appreciate the time and the effort that he's put in and the perspective he's brought for us, and we wish him all, all wish him luck in college. So that's on the agenda tonight. We will have a presentation from Impact Bioenergy to talk about an integrated biodigester resource recovery project. They, I do not see if they have joined us.
I think they did. I don't see them here yet.
I see Michael Smith from Impact Bioenergy, yeah, and then, uh...
Yes.
Okay, okay, so we could, we could move your presentation up, and then kind of give you the work session to discuss it, if, does that sound like a, would you be up for that? Michael?
He's muted.
Michael?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, would you like to give your presentation now?
I'm waiting for Jan Allen to join.
Okay, all right, we'll do our police department report then as we wait. So interim Chief Hutchings, if you would.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council, yes. I'll make this brief. Today at the food bank was, Washington County Health Department came down and did a vaccination clinic, worked with Jody Stoltz, she, she was on the scene, of course, getting heads up yesterday that they were coming. And to date, for the month of August, Tenino's had 85 people that were tested for COVID that wanted to come in and got tested, and I think that was held at the park. To date, 11 received vaccinations, and 43% of those, it was their first shot or first injection, 39% it was their final injection, or they're fully vaccinated, I should say. And the entire total for Tenino citizenry, I don't know, I don't have that information. But it was a success anyway. Health Department came down with their van and fully staffed, and they had a security officer on site as well, should there be any controversy, and there was absolutely none. It was a beautiful day as well. Our vacations are done at the police station now, at the police department, and I'll be putting word out, seating additional reserve police officers. The chief's job announcement is just a day or so away from going out. Once it's completely done with all the data that needs to be in it, just one or two more pieces, I'll ship it, I'll send it to you, Mayor, so you can put a final eyes on it, and then it's going to get spammed out, and that will get us on the, on the ball. Again, it's going to WASPIC, Public Safety Session, Criminal Justice Training Commission, AWC does job announcements as well, and a professional police magazine called Police One, and there's a couple others involved. There's still ongoing work with the chiefs and the sheriff and the county, as well as our legal staff regarding further understanding and application of all the new legislation regarding law enforcement that went into effect July 26th. It seems to be progressing as we're finding our way between this and around it, not around it doing a backend, but processing exactly what the intent of the legislature was. Finally, the speed to feedback sign that we have out on 99 right down in front of the school, Tenino's School, has not been functioning for a few years now, and so we're going to have that taken down. We're going to have Stalker again look at it and try to assess what is the doggone issue, but in the meantime, I work with the director of Public Works, Thurston County Public Works, and they'll be bringing down a sign that we can use until further notice that will give people coming in to the, into the city, the highway, the, the feedback side of what their, their speed is. So we will have something in place before the 7th of September, the first day of school, to slow people down for, for our children. And that is all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Doesn't sound like it. Oh, go ahead, John.
What have you heard about the legislation? You said you guys talked about it, but I haven't heard any, anything from fire or police.
Well, the, as a result of the couple of meetings we had just before and just after the legislation took effect, we came out with common policies, and we went into Lexi Poll and updated those policies as well, and the officers have, have copies of all these policies, they've read them, so they know what we can and cannot do. But I just received today a video from the Criminal Justice Training Commission of their interpretation of what some of the definitions are, for example. Well, I'm trying to think what those, what those were now, and I'll give them to you in just a moment while I'm talking. But it's the Criminal Justice Training Commission's interpretation of what the intent of the legislature was. But if they're going to be the arbiter of police use of force investigations, and I believe currently they are, then I guess, I don't, I don't know if we take that at face value or not, so that is, that is being researched and looked into. It was the CJTC's interpretation of physical force and effect, affecting arrests versus making an arrest and imminent danger. What does imminent mean? So all these references of words, and what was the legislature's intent? But again, we're not getting it from the legislature, we're getting it from our own interpretation, now we're getting some input from Criminal Justice Training Commission. So it's, it's still, it's like Jell-O, it's just, it's, it's bananas. It's just very confusing, as I mentioned, I think, at the last meeting. It's pitting counties, agencies against county agencies, by that I mean, like the Sheriff's Department in King County, and I believe, oh boy, Belling, was it Bellingham, those are other ones, they have one interpretation, first one, and then, for example, Clark, others have different interpretations of what the law, or what the intent means, and so it's still, still very confusing, which is very troubling. I don't know if that answers your question, it's probably not what you were after.
Well, it's better than I've gotten so far, I said, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other?
Anybody else have any further questions? Okay, I'm going to bring up, is somebody talking? Okay, Sean Paget, are you, are you online with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Sean is on vacation with his family right now, so he, we've got a, we've got a proposal, scope of work from Rite Systems to do some security hardening on our IT system, and I'd like to give Sean the opportunity to talk to the council, and, and then he can kind of be on his way and enjoy his vacation. So Sean, if you want to talk about your proposal, go ahead.
Mayor, I appreciate that. It is basically three parts, security hardening of your infrastructure, your IT infrastructure. You currently have a number of Microsoft 365 licenses, authentication, capabilities, and we want to implement that within the city and the police.
Can everyone hear me okay?
A little bit, it sounds like you're in a tunnel.
I'm in Bozeman.
I think someone else's microphone wasn't muted, but it looks like everybody is now, sorry.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll start again, security hardening. This is a proposal with three main components. The dollar amount for the service work to implement these three basic security tools is $7,920. You currently have the licenses for multi-factor authentication, we call MFA. Typically, we do this using cell phones, but in the case of the city, if, if the city is not going to allow for that second code notification to come through a personal cellphone, then we would use key fobs with Tenino employees for that second factor authentication, along with the Microsoft 365. The other piece of that is a tool that is internal to Microsoft 365, you're already paying for it. We're going to use it to manage policy and governance on your, your PC devices. Again, not a significant cost on a monthly basis, but it will help us to manage security and policies of those physical devices. The last piece would be included in your monthly subscription, and that is email security layer. We use a product from Mimecast, is a to fight ransomware, spear phishing, these types of threats that many cities, certainly of your size, are facing. So trying to keep it short and sweet and easy to understand. $7,920, this would add, in addition, would add $930.25 to the monthly contract for City Hall, and would add $110.25 to the police department monthly service fees. And inside those dollar amounts are both the subscription for the email security piece and the services to support those. So with that, I will leave it open to questions.
Does anyone have any questions for Sean?
Good, Chief.
Thank you. When, if this gets approved, I'm imagining you're looking for approval of this, when would that be installed, when would that be effective? Not only the, the firewall, or whether it's a security, but the, the fee?
It's a good question. We wouldn't implement the fee until after the services were complete. So this, once this statement of work was complete, then we would make the adjustment to the monthly recurring fees. As for when we can implement this, in talking with the mayor, Rite Systems also, we are very anxious to get this done. There's a great deal of threat out there, and we'd like to turn it around in as soon as two weeks, but my engineering staff would force me to push that out probably to four weeks, so the end of September, we'd like to have this done. So all that said, I would expect that the new monthly fees would change in October.
Thank you. Is it just a software update then, or is it, we have to go down, the system go down?
We are activating some tools that you currently have with your current licensing, and we're also adding a email encryption software as another layer in your infrastructure, specifically around email, which is where your biggest threat lies.
So does that take the system down though while it's being installed?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my problem with this right now is that I have no idea what my password was for my email, that's all changed, so I can't get any of my emails. Who do I, I have to get this fixed?
Sean, you want to just tell them his password over the meeting? I was playing, we can help you out with that at City Hall, I believe Jen has the ability to reset the passwords now.
Okay.
So you just have to come down to City Hall and work with the staff on that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Sean? And you're in Bozeman?
Wait, wait, we have, Mr. Mayor, we have enough money for another thousand, for a thousand dollars a month, right, for this?
We're going to have, I mean, we're going to have to. But yes. Are there any other questions? Sean, do you have any other comments?
I, I don't, I would just, I'd make the comment that I think that many, already many healthcare organizations are requiring multi-factor authentication, and I would expect that it may very well be legislated that, that cities, public entities, all have multi-factor authentication in the future. So I think we're headed down a path that you'll have to go down eventually anyway, but with all the issues that we've had with your domain, we feel that this is a crucial component to getting you on a strong foundation.
Thank you. All right, if there's no other questions for Mr. Paget, I think we'll let him go and enjoy Bozeman.
Have a good vacation.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Michael Smith, are you, is your counterpart with you, and are you able to present now?
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you have the floor, you got 15 minutes, take all the time you need.
Okay, great, thank you. And good evening, City Council members, and thank you for this opportunity. What I'd like to do is just give you a little history on this, sort of the context, is we're applying for a grant, this is phase two, it's Department of Energy, U.S. We, we did make it through phase one, so a year ago, we came, council partnering up on a wastewater treatment plant improvement to recover resources, and we have, we manufacture digesters, so we're a manufacturer in Washington State. We manufacture small digesters, community scale digestors to recover renewable energy and fertilizer from organic.
Can you, can you explain what a digester is, Michael?
Okay, sure. A digester is, it's an anaerobic digester, so it's, it's a tank filled with microbes without oxygen, and the microbes do all the work. So in, we feed, we have different methods and processes and ways to sort of pulverize, you know, that organic material to get it ready for digestion. So we build everything in a box, and, and so you just need to feed it, and it then is pulverized and flows into this tank, and inside the tank are the microbes, and they break down this organic material into biogas, and then a liquid slurry, the organic fertilizer. So all of the energy content, all of the energy and nutrients that are still in the food are then basically recycled or upcycled into new products, so the new products being the biogas and the fertilizer. So that, that's an overview on the digester. But what I'd like to do, so the grant, we're up for the deadline coming up in September, so we made it through phase one, we did win, I don't know how many applicants there were, but there are 10 that were picked in phase one. So we're competing with nine other technology companies around the country, and again, the focus is technology that may not often be used at small wastewater treatment plants that are often at bigger wastewater treatment plants, that recover energy, water, and nutrients. So we're demonstrating how we can recover more resources at Tenino, and the original proposal, we had the digester on the wastewater treatment plant side, and what we're doing with the adjustment is to focus on recovering all the biosalads through composting, and have the digester on the, on the other side of the fence with the ag park, and just digest food waste, so we'd have two, two streams that we would blend together. I wanted to, have you had the opportunity to see the video, is it something we can show, Mr. Mayor? Yeah, there it is. This is a great overview, it's four minutes. It should be, it should be a sound.
A compelling real world problem addressed by this project involves an economical new pathway to beneficially use sewage, biosalads, and food waste in a direct connection to local food production. It also solves a larger real world problem of climate change, loss of farmland productivity, and increasing chemical dependency of our food supply. This new paradigm is built with a small wastewater facility as the cornerstone. Above this cornerstone sits the local farm community and food and beverage producers. We are using both Class A EQ biosolids compost and fermented food waste fertilizer to produce food with minimal petrochemical input, and we put a focus on the health and sustainability of the local soil system. It supports both conventional and regenerative organic agriculture. We have designed and scaled an exciting approach by using composting and digestion together as a manufacturing system for farmland and farmers. We are shifting the focus from disposal and land application to a more powerful and beneficial emphasis of new resource manufacturing. Resources that we are focused on include water, energy, five different forms of organic waste, compost, and chemical-free fertilizer made entirely from food waste. We will be measuring 15 key metrics of project performance, as well as nine sub-metrics of soil quality. We've designed a way to truly convert wastewater treatment into a local circular economy. It's a holistic approach to stay focused on local solutions at zero waste. This spawns a shift towards efficiency in a very natural way. Economics are improved by avoiding expensive and unpredictable sludge regimens, as well as generating new income from sewage processing. This project includes the recycling of other organic waste, generation of onsite renewable energy, sequestrating carbon, and improving the long-term profitability and sustainability of local farms. It's a novel and unique method where biosalads can find their highest best use. These technologies are already proven and work reliably, but we are the first to demonstrate them in a collaborative method with a community focus. We have over 40 years of experience beginning prior to 1980, involving over 10 million wet tons of composting of a full spectrum of organic waste materials. We also have over 22 operating years of food waste digestion. This project can very easily be replicated at any of the 7,400 small and medium-sized wastewater facilities in the U.S. That is roughly half of all the facilities across the United States.
There you go, we just filmed that the other day, last week. I'd like to bring up Jan to give an overview of how this works. Jan, are you there?
Yep, yeah, man. Hi, council members, I'm with Michael. Michael, you did a good job of explaining anaerobic digestion, that was perfect.
All right, passed the test.
So, so you, so you, you got the message that we're giving the U.S. Department of Energy, and you really are, Tenino's really in a, in a position to demonstrate this whole concept. We ticked off a bunch of metrics at the end, which we really need to do to, to outcompete these other nine teams, and there is a lot of value in this. The, the trick will be to both fund the project and to find people that will appreciate the products, and we're really, we really want to get the city away from the reactive sludge lagoon maintenance, and more into a high-quality compost. We've talked with your, your, the service provider at the compost plant about La Conner, and there's another one up on Whidby Island we're looking at. So making high-quality compost is really within your reach, there, Silver Springs is down the road, we've talked to them. There's a possibility for some synergy with, with them, so this, this is really, we're pretty excited about it, actually, it's, it's, it also brings in the food waste, the zero waste and food waste diversion from the landfill aspect, and when you add the farming element, and you do the math on the carbon, the carbon that's, or the reversal of carbon in the atmosphere, it's pretty impressive, actually. It's, 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 it's significant for the composting and digestion, but it's really significant when you add the farming, just because you're displacing diesel fuel and transport and chemical fertilizers. So, so we've sort of knitted all this together, it sounds like a lot of common sense, and that's exactly what it is. I don't know why something like this hasn't been practiced yet, but maybe now the new focus on food waste is part of the answer. So, so that, you saw the message in the video, we're open for questions if anybody has any.
Does anyone in the council have any questions for Michael or John? And Dave Waterson's on here as well, if he, if he has any questions or comments, he's been a big help in, in this process.
Yeah, I just go back to the point that we had brought this to the council previously, nice to see everybody, by the way, and for this phase one project, we did make some modifications as they talked about here, but this, this, what we're asking for here, so you're another letter of support for the phase two project. So basically, we're reapplying with more detail now, and just looking for your support to continue on with this, just like we did last time, you know, it's going to mean we have to find financing and other things to make it work, but that's part of the phase two, is getting more of the details together and looking at all the specifics implemented. So we're asking for a letter of support for phase two, is kind of what we're looking for here.
Okay. Councilmember Callahan, did you have a comment?
Yes, I, I believe I brought it up last time that we had this conversation. Is this going to be able to be used, for example, with the ag park, to use some of the affluent and some of the biogases that you guys are producing from all of this stuff as heating materials for, for new construction and all that kind of stuff?
Well, it's going to have a combined heat and power generator, it's a generator that makes hot water and electricity, and whether that's located at the ag park or at the treatment plant, that's, we're, you know, we have flexibility to locate either place or share that, share that energy, so that, we're not being that specific about who gets the energy at this point, we're just talking about how much energy. I think Michael, Michael's going to submit this first week, I think, just after the first week of September, and I'm sure we'll get you guys a copy of the, of the final package that goes in, and then I think- And then I think in November, it's only about a one-month turnaround. The 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 folks, wherever they are at the Department of Energy, they're gonna announce who they awarded the their uh the grant to, so.
See, the reason that, the reason that I asked this, uh Dave, did I did I ask this before when you brought it up last time?
I can maybe answer a little bit uh better. I mean, I think there's a lot of things you can do with the energy that's created from the biodigester. It's just a matter of figuring out what what is the best sport. You can make natural gas, they can put it in a to burn in self or barbecues. You can make, do different things with it. So I guess it's just a matter of if we get through to this, deciding what what you want to do with that biogas product.
Okay, because the reason that I bring it up is because I think it's Sweden. I'm not positive. It's been a long time since I looked at it. Pretty much all of their new construction runs off of affluent for their heating systems. And we're right now, because of of the development that's proposed for all the new section of Tenino, uh it would be a really good idea to put us in that position. So all those new houses and and the ag park and all of that stuff would would be heated from that type of a source. And if we're producing that kind of stuff, maybe it's something that we can include in this presentation and say, hey, we can do this to help heat all these new homes and businesses.
So, all right, at seven thirty, uh that's gonna end the work session. We're gonna continue this in the in the regular meeting, if if Michael and David and John want to stick around. Uh and there can be a little further discussion. But with no further ado, uh I'm gonna close the work session and uh call to order the August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one Tenino City Council meeting. Uh let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Copeland. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We uh that brings us to agenda approval. We have an agenda before us needing approval. Move approval. We have a motion to second to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dave, is it weird not to vote?
Yeah.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That brings us to approval of the minutes for the uh eight-ten twenty-twenty-one meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the eight-ten meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to the consent calendar consisting of August eleventh, twenty-twenty-one through August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Payroll EFTs in the amount of sixty thousand five hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-five cents. Claims checks number three zero zero seven five through three zero zero eight nine. And EFTs in the amount of thirty-six thousand eleven dollars and forty cents for a grand total of ninety-six thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents, uh along with a correction on resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero five, sale of a nineteen ninety-seven Ford F-two-fifty uh public works truck, not a nineteen ninety-six police vehicle as a resolution was uh was was approved. So that's a, just a housekeeping issue on the consent calendar. Do I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That, we have no executive session. Uh we had the presentation for Impact Bioenergy in the meeting. Uh however, if they have anything in they'd further like to present on, uh we give you a couple of minutes. Is there, did you guys cover everything you needed to cover?
Coming back on, um this is Michael. Um I think so. I the main thing is the letter support of support. We need, we need to demonstrate that the city is is on board, committed to doing this project. Um and I just want to emphasize that if we win this grant, um and then there's a a really good likelihood that we could get financing. We have a financing partner. I've asked Jared Sperry to be on the call here. He's um with Equilibrium Capital. There he is. And um he's very interested in this project. And so, but the way they work with their funding is they they need a lot of replication, a lot of projects, not just one one-off. So so the idea would be, um sort of the goal is to really win this and win it. And then you'll be a model um for other towns around the country. And Jared, I, if you want to say a few words, but it's really exciting to work with Jared if 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 we could do projects together.
Yeah, that's right, Michael. Thank you, hey, council. Um this model is something that could be replicated um on this scale um for a lot of different cities and towns. So we're uh working closely with Impact and watching this one specifically. And if this uh, you know, if this works out and the funding's approved, then we'd like to be a potential capital provider for this one.
Thank you, Jared.
Thanks, Jared. That's it.
All right, so Michael is the, it is on the agenda under new business. Uh we, the council, the, we are recommending that uh um it is not. Okay, we'll uh we'll make an adjustment. I don't. Yeah, yeah, we'll make an adjustment there and uh we can make a motion to add uh uh draft letter of support for Impact Bioenergy. And if council passes it, then uh we can all sign it, I'm thinking. That sound good?
Yeah. I'm not so sure because the the agendas are already been passed without any additions.
Yeah, but you can make a motion at any time to add something. Um I can, I can sign it, but uh.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's.
I think, I think we should all sign it.
I would like to see everybody sign it. Yeah.
Uh could do real quick. Uh Michael, when do you need that bike? When are you gonna turn this into so they have? No one.
I haven't, the deadline's September ninth, so I'm gonna send it in. I'd like to get everything wrapped up by the end of this week, but I have next week too.
Okay.
Okay, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to revisit the agenda and make a motion to add a letter of recommendation from the city for the bio uh for the bio project that we're looking at under new business, please.
Yep.
I second.
We have motion to second to amend the agenda to add a letter of support for Impact Bioenergy's project under new business. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Um that brings us to public comment. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to provide public comment, please do so at this time. If we give you three minutes, state your name and address. Again, this is the time for public comment. If there's anyone in the public who likes to provide a comment, please do so. Going once, going twice, moving on. We have no proclamations. We have no old business. That brings us to new business. Uh first item will go uh letter of support for Impact Bioenergy. Councilmember O'Callahan, you added this to the agenda. Go ahead.
Uh move approval.
Second.
We have a motion to second to move uh to draft a letter of support for Impact Bioenergy for all of council and mayor assigned. Is there any discussion? Okay, uh Michael, do you have a draft letter for us to uh put on city letterhead? And we could get, that would make things go a lot faster. Okay.
Yes, I do.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Michael, John, David, Jared. Um that brings us to Councilmember Copeland, Cutter's resignation. We included his letter of resignation within the packet. Um we are recommending action to accept Councilmember Copeland's uh letter.
Thank you, thank you, Dick.
Don't look to me. I'm not a, I'm not uh saying yes to this.
Who's, who's?
Lack of motion.
Yeah, nobody's making a motion. Somebody, somebody needs to mute their their microphone. Move approval. We have a motion to approve accepting Cutter's letter of resignation. And we'll uh we'll make sure it says in the minute that it was reluctantly made. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to accept his letter of resignation. Is there any discussion?
Good luck in school. Do well. Come back home.
Mm-hmm. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Uh this creates a vacancy. Uh the vacancy, however, would be, will be short-lived. So I, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, if if I'm, if I'm wrong, kick me. But I do not uh think that we need to rush to appoint someone to the seat. Uh this, with this vacancy as it is, uh as soon as the election is certified, so we have, there's candidates running for this seat. As soon as the election is certified in like, it'll be like November twentieth or something, that person that uh that wins the election will automatically take the seat. So it's not like it would be something that would hold over until the first of the year. Uh I certainly wouldn't want to appoint one of the candidates. I don't think that would be appropriate. And uh just finding somebody to sit in the seat for, you know, I at at most two months, uh I I don't know if it really, really gains us anything. So my intent is to just kind of let it ride. Uh but if that is not acceptable to anyone, please uh let me know what your thoughts are. You don't need to do it right now, but just uh, you know, provide me with your input. Um so there's that. We do have options, you know, I they, I talked to council, you know, former council member Waterston about it briefly. And uh if, you know, if we really needed uh somebody to sit in the seat, we do have uh some former council members that would be willing to, Susan Copeland said the same thing, that would be willing to to step in and 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 fill the role for a brief period. But it, I don't think it's necessary. If I'm wrong, uh please let me know. Uh that brings us to item six under new business, uh confirmation of new clerk treasurer, Kayleen Canup. Uh so, you know, as everyone knows, Becca went back to the city of Aberdeen. And uh we have a vacancy on the city clerk treasurer position. Thankfully, we still had a list of candidates that had applied. And uh Kayleen was was the top candidate. Uh she was, it was, it was tough between her and Becca. And uh and she was, she was recommended by several members of the the committee that convened to do the interviews. Uh so I did call the top two candidates uh after Becca, and we did a second round of interviews. And 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 Kayleen's qualifications and her uh and her personality uh made her a very, very strong candidate and and somebody we would like to uh confirm tonight. Um she is formerly the city clerk treasurer for uh, I'm trying to remember the name. There was a city in Idaho, roughly the same size of Tenino. Uh and she worked as the uh the deputy clerk treasurer for about fifteen years prior to becoming the clerk treasurer. And then uh she moved to Tenino, moved to the Tenino area and since has worked for Nelson Insurance Agency. And uh, you know, we, I think most of us know Ron and Kay Nelson. Uh they spoke very highly of her. She came very highly recommended from the Nelson uh Insurance Agency. And then she's been working for Labor and Industries uh for the last couple of months. Uh we, we did give her a conditional offer of employment, uh which she's accepted. Uh she, if confirmed, she would begin the first of the month. And uh she's, she's got a, she's got a lot of experience, a lot more experience than uh any of the, any of the clerk treasures that we've, we've hired uh in in my time. So having somebody that's got the background and has done the job is gonna be very beneficial. Uh because we need somebody that can hit the ground running and get the uh, you're working on the twenty-twenty-two budget. So uh Linda, do you have any comments? You helped sit in on the uh the final interview for Kayleen.
I I just do think that she is uh best qualified of the candidates.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to confirm Kayleen Canup as the new Tenino City Clerk Treasurer. Is there any discussion?
Welcome aboard.
Okay.
Could you spell the last name for me?
Uh C A N U P. It's in the packet.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. She'll be very happy. She's excited to get started. That brings us to right systems updating proposal on citywide security hardening. Recommended action is approve right systems proposal for security hardening.
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the right system proposal. Is there any discussion? I hope not, because Sean is not here anymore.
Okay, um never mind then.
Okay. All right, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That, those are uh, those are some big items for us. Uh that brings us to reports. Chamber of Commerce. George, what's the business?
Hello, Mayor and Council. The uh chamber last week held our monthly luncheon. We did move it from an in-person luncheon to a Zoom-only luncheon. We heard from Experience Olympian Beyond new executive director, CEO, president, Knet Pitts, talking about what they're doing to help promote Thurston County and specifically Tenino. More to come on that really with the, they're in the planning process. They just got done surveying about three hundred people about what they feel about Thurston County and and what to do to promote it in the future. So we may ever come back later. We are planning tentatively to have a social on September fifteenth. But depending on what's going on with the COVID in the Delta area and what we feel comfortable doing or not doing, that would be an evening social at the Kodiak Room. The board, Chamber Board makes next Wednesday at uh five-thirty to discuss that. We are having a candidates forum on October twentieth, and that will either be an in-person candidates forum and or it'll go to a Zoom one. We're also offering the candidates the option to do a video if they're not able to be at the meeting. That will be a noon meeting. And then November, we're gonna do a showcase of the Tenino nonprofits. December, we'll do the announcement of the volunteer of the year and election of the board.
Thank you, George. Uh EDC.
The EDC, I want to announce that we have two programs coming up. One's called Business Tune-Up. It's gonna start this Friday for businesses. It's a five hundred and thirty-three dollar program that I've uh got two steady scholarships for. So if any Tenino business is interested in it. And then in September, we also have the scale of training coming up again. And that's free through the Washington State Department of Commerce. So that information will be posted to the Chamber's Facebook page.
Thank you, sir. Uh VCB, Fire District Twelve.
Uh basically, what we talked about, you know, just normal housekeeping stuff until we got to the vaccines. We had a rather large and heated discussion, all in favor of our fire department and and uh the volunteers and the paid staff. Uh if you do not have the vaccine, you're, you can lose your job. Uh we, these, these are people that have been there every day throughout this whole thing without question and without, without any regard for their own safety. And now they're gonna say that, well, if you haven't been vaccinated, that you can lose your job and your livelihood. Uh this is just wrong. There was a, there was a demonstration, I believe it was up in Marysville last week where a whole bunch of people showed up in support of this. Uh so we'll see what the state's going to do. Okay, uh so we'll see what the state's going to do because Chris Reichel's been quoted as saying, well, there's ways to get around this. Well, if there's ways to get around this, then why the heck you have it in the first place? Uh in other words, we were not real happy with uh the words that's coming down about our departments.
Hey, Linda, can you take over for a second? I gotta see what's up.
Okay.
All right, just let John keep talking.
Go ahead, John.
Uh that's pretty much it. That was the bulk of uh of the meeting. We've got. Uh, that's pretty much it. That was the bulk of, uh, of the meeting. We've got a, a convention coming up in October. Uh, and it starts on the twentieth, so I'm, I'm not sure how I'm gonna be able to juggle both the chamber and, uh, getting up to Marysville for that, uh, for the convention that we have. It's my first one and going up as chairman is not just the average position. Uh, otherwise, we're, we're pretty good. We looked, looked over the numbers. The final number showed that we were about two, a little about about two hundred and fifty votes short of certification. We won the vote by sixty-three percent, but we just didn't have enough for certification. Uh, so we're, we're back on the ballot for the November one, so everybody that voted for the fire department before, please do again and get your friends to vote too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. We have a representative from the library. I don't think I saw Linda. Museum?
No report.
Jody, Tenino Community Services.
So, um, to reiterate what, uh, the chief said, we did have a, another shot clinic this, uh, today. Uh, we had one last Friday. We had a very good turnout. We had a good turnout today. Everybody's been pretty happy with, um, all of the turnouts that are happening. Um, with these, I must say that sadly, the health department is having to supply, um, security because, um, people cannot behave themselves. They don't want the shot. They can't seem to just keep walking. They have to get belligerent. Um, they've accosted the nurses, the staff from Thurston County, um, Health Department, so therefore they are now having to bring in, um, security. At that point, that's when I called the chief to make sure that he was aware and, um, he stepped in and made his presence known and that kind of thing. So, but I do have to say, we had absolutely zero problems, um, in Tenino. Anytime we've had a shot clinic in Tenino, there has not been a problem. So let's keep up that particular good piece of, uh, of humanness. Um, just keep walking, you know? Um, other than that, that's, we're just feeding people. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Jody. Uh, Arts Commission.
Mayor, I just wanted to report to council.
What's that?
I want to report to council that we are doing our final, uh, report to the Washington State Arts Commission on our project from July, Ju- July first, twenty twenty through June thirty, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, a report that's due to Washington State Arts Commission. I work with Judy, uh, to get some information, so we'll be completing that by next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Civil Service, SOD Improvement Grant Review Committee. I don't believe that there's, uh, anything there.
No report.
Okay, uh, Chief of Police gave his report. Uh, Public Works, uh, you know, they've been very busy. They, if you look, uh, behind the San Stone Cafe, Public Works has been working diligently, putting in the, the, the swales, uh, kinda the, the water retention system or the water dispersion system that's gonna be part of the parking lot. So they've been, they've been working, uh, on, on the parking lot quite a bit. Another thing they've been working on is the septic receiving process. So, uh, we had, we thought we had everything squared away. It's farming ecology. Uh, our next hurdle was, uh, working with, um, water, wastewater services. So they, uh, we, we've kinda, we've got, we've got some more, more work to do with, uh, with wastewater services. Uh, they are on board with the septic receiving. Uh, last, when I talked to Troy earlier today, he intends to start receiving septic from Goble Septic, uh, haulers, uh, tomorrow, I believe. And then, uh, and then we, you know, we're just gonna refine the process. So Public Works has been busy. Uh, City Planner, Building Official. Uh, we, a- as you know, we hired an additional Public Works employee who is working as the building official. Uh, he's working in code enforcement and he's working in, uh, building plans and, and permitting. Uh, we've got him signed up for some classes, uh, in October where he, where he becomes certified in, uh, residential building inspection. And, and he's, he's already off, off and running. He's learned a lot of things. Uh, you'll see some small improvements around town, like, uh, uh, there was a giant blackberry bush growing out of a building in between, uh, the feed store and Whitewood Cider. He went and he had a talk with the business owners and he's like, guys, you know, clean it up. We don't need a blackberry, uh, bush monster growing into the sidewalk. And, and so, I mean, that, but that's been something that's been overlooked and, uh, kind of neglected for a long time. And so he's, he's just, you know, working at it. Uh, I intend to have him come and introduce himself to city council soon, uh, but he's, he's still, you know, working on getting his feet on the ground. Uh, City Attorney, Clerk Treasurer, you should be meeting her at the next meeting. Uh, Mayor. Um, several meetings, uh, hiring a clerk treasurer, working with police chief about getting the, the new job announcement out. Um, onboarding another employee and, uh, just doing our thing. We've, uh, we've got bottom floor of City Hall is pretty much all gutted out. And, uh, Construction Inc. should start on the renovations downstairs very soon. Um, that, that, that's gonna be nice, so, uh, keep an eye out for that. Be that.
Still on a summer break.
Okay, CIP. Solid Waste Advisory, that was Cutter. Uh, Steady. That's you, George.
Uh, we had also held Steady as a Zoom meeting last week, and then our next meeting will be the third Friday of, uh, September. We'll probably hold that one as a, a Zoom meeting as well, depending on what's going on with COVID. If I can have a new nonprofit doing housing in Thurston County, be our guest speaker.
Cool, thank you. Tenino School Board. Rachel?
Sorry, my, my camera was not sharing. So, um, getting towards the end of summer, which is sad for me, but so, um, I'm gonna quickly run through. There's a lot of stuff. There's a lot of changes from last year to this year. But, um, so the first day of school is gonna be September eighth. So the schools are gonna go back to normal drop-off and pickup times. Unlike, uh, last year where they started later. Um, the changes this year though, parents are not gonna be required to submit the attestations. That's where once a week you'd go in and say, no, my child has or has not been exposed to COVID or they're not sick. Um, it's gonna be an honor system, obviously, and up to parents to keep their kid home if they're sick. Um, there's not gonna be any more temperature checks at school, so when the kids come in, um, they just get to come in. Um, but they will have to wear their mask whether they're vaccinated or not. And district-wide will go back five days a week, but I know for the high school at least too, the schedule's gonna be five days a week, but then two of the days are gonna be like alternating schedule. And, uh, due to federal funding, the district-wide will provide all the school supplies. And, um, every student qualifies for breakfast and lunch. And, um, upcoming is going to be all the open houses and those are all gonna be virtual district-wide. So we, if you have a child in the district, you should have already received an email regarding the times and dates of those, but if not, then, um, the office is open, but they are closed on Fridays. So just Monday through Thursday is the office hours. So, um, other than that, that's everything from the school district.
Thank you, Rachel.
Cispus got pushed back too. I don't know if you saw that. It's now in March now instead of September.
So what is?
Cispus.
Oh. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Yes, Cispus is pushed back, which, um, there's gonna be some high school counselors, so that's gonna kind of throw a wrench into some of their schedules, but hopefully, hopefully Cispus still happens and it's still on board, but we'll see.
All right, thank you. TRPC, that was Cutter. TPB, that's you, Councilmember O'Callahan. No report, he says. Pull the comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to provide public comment, now's your opportunity. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak. All right, announcements.
As, as usual, we're getting really close to September eleventh. It's the twentieth anniversary and, uh, this is when we're gonna have the, uh, first responders potluck barbecue. I wanna thank everybody that's already stepped up. For example, uh, just the other day, Sanstone, uh, o- offered to help. Uh, the cake is coming out of the bakery from, uh, our grocery store here. Uh, lots, lots of people helped, including the mayor. So I just wanna thank everybody for stepping up to help out with the, with the, uh, potluck barbecue. Again, there's no politics. It's just to meet the police and fire departments. Then all those personnel that are there for you twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You call, they don't question except to find out what's wrong with you so they can come and help. That's all this is for, is just to say thank you to them. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other announcements? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Nondebatable motion, y'all.
Good night.